Great surprise today.
Yes, great. Father, we thank this day you've given to us, Lord, and thank for all you many blessings that you've given us, Lord. Lord, do you pray to just be with us here today, Lord, that we just always look for you for guidance and decisions when made, Lord. Rest all these things in thy precious name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Called meeting to order. We have a motion to approve the claims.
What motion?
Second. One second. All in favor? Mr. Exey, you're first on the list, just one.
Standing right here.
Wherever, wherever you feel comfortable.
Thank you for your time. I'm here to discuss my position at District Two. For the last several years, I've been a supervisor here. Kenneth Tucker was one of my employees. Now he's my commissioner. I know when you got elected, this will be a learning curve for both of us. I've worked like every other employee since November of 2018, when you guys took over. Kenneth and I have never discussed supervisor position. I don't think he wants to discuss anything with me. This is the problem. Monday, Kenneth brought it to my attention that he was not pleased with my work performance. He was very, he didn't explain to me that I could be transferred, etc. So I finished out the day, talked with the administrator, and took a few days off till that thing settled down. I've worked for the county a long time. I worked hard to achieve supervisor position. I don't feel like it's fair to be demoted because Kenneth got elected commissioner. We need help to come to a solution. That's all.
Thank you, Exey. I think the way you look, you look together.
Yeah, my understanding is that in 2015, Eddie Berg raised Exey's pay rate to be what was considered foreman pay at that time, seventeen fifty-one an hour. And so from that point forward, the understanding between the two of them was that Exey is supervisor. Now, whether or not that understanding goes, you know, before that, I don't know. But that's what I have the paper record of, as far as when that pay rate officially changed. And then, as soon as Kenneth took office, he wanted to bring David into a position of supervisor, and he did the same thing.
Well, no, I just bring him the same pay.
Yes, brought the pay rate to seventeen fifty-one. So...
When was it voted on where he was ever put foreman?
It has not been voted on for either of them, the word, just the pay rate.
He's legally, under Eddie, never was foreman.
I don't know how, I don't know if it's just a pay rate thing, or if it, if the word has to be in the minutes, or what, what that supervisor agreement consists of.
As far as him going to be in our foreman, me and David was there since 2015, and Eddie never told us that you were our foreman. We never knew it. He never made it public. Never. We never knew it. So, and your job performance? See, you got rode up last year. You called, you said F-U to me. And this law here, it says I could have farted you in, but I didn't. Okay? There was incident about a slag issue. You and Tanner went to Vulcan and got slag, and I told you not to overload the truck, and I told you to get off the scales and go dump it. Where did you dump the load at? In Bill Campbell, at somebody else's house. Yeah, I got problems with your work ethics. There's another time, just like the other day, when I, when you working on equipment at shop, and it takes all day to change the oil filter. There's something wrong with that. I'm putting out plant mix. See, I've not told you, I've told all three of them, there's nothing that they can't do, or will do, or haven't done, or anything that I haven't already done. You can't fool me on any of this stuff. I know what it takes to get a job done. So, as far as you, we discussing being foreman, as far as in my eyes, you've never been fooled into us, because it never was voted on, it never was made public. Eddie never told us you were our foreman. Never. So, where we're at right now, in my understanding is, you've got two hands that you're paying foreman pay, and neither one of them has never been voted to be a foreman. Is that right? I mean, there's no paper trail of it.
Just the pay rate has been voted on.
Just the pay rate has been voted on. Nobody has been officially named a foreman supervisor, whatever you want to call it, according to the paperwork that Caitlin and I's finding. And when we go back to job performance, just like the yellow vests and stuff you're supposed to wear, you don't want to wear them. You don't want to drive a dump truck. You don't want to put out plant mix. You don't want to go on patches. That's what we do. I don't know how to please you. I was elected to serve the people in District Two and open these roads up. And I told all three of y'all, whether it, Tanner and I, I don't know if he was there or not, I said, "I'm going to open the roads up. I don't care if it's gravel, pavement, I don't care who lives on it. I don't care what color skin they are. I don't care if they're rich, poor. I don't care what their last name is." I said I was going to open the roads up. Did I not tell you all three of y'all that? I said I'm going to open these roads up regardless who lives on them, regardless of the pavement. I don't care if it's gravel. If it's a county road, I'm going to take care of it. And that's what I've been doing. So... But somebody going to work for me. We work eight hours a day. You don't take the vehicle home. You don't stay two hours for dinner. Stuff like that, I got a problem with. And I told you, seven hours. I expect at least six and a half, seven hours of work. And I told all three of this. I don't leave them out. I don't hide it around, bully it, beat it around the bush. I mean what I say. You're going to either work, or you're not going to work for me. It's that simple. Have I not told all three of y'all that?
Yes, sir.
So I'm not pointing one single person out when I say this. So... But I do get aggravated when I see the work is not being done. Because the people out there pay taxes, they expect us to do it. It's their money we're spending. It's their money, the equipment tears up. It's their money. It's not our money. And I was elected to do this job, and I'm going to do it. I don't care who would make mad doing it. We're going to get the job done. That's the way I feel about it. Do you make anything to say, they can say it.
Yes, I have something to say. When you took over and you saw that my pay was so much different than everyone's else's, did you check to see why?
No. They said you was foreman. Like I said, Eddie never told us you was foreman. You was never voted on to be foreman.
Well, then, when you accepted the position of commissioner after you got elected by the people, did you accept everything as it was, as far as when you inherited, you inherited everything, correct?
I inherited a mess. I inherited no shop, no gravel pit, no equipment. The roads all gone, grown up. I've got shop, I've got starting equipment, and I'm getting the roads opened back up. I changed things. I don't live them like they were. If I don't like the way they are, I change them. That's the position I got when I got elected.
So basically, what you're saying is, you changed me and everything else.
I didn't even consider you as foreman. You never, like I said, Eddie never told me and David that you were our...
What I'm asking is, when you saw the pay raise difference, you didn't accept it, not what it was?
I actually wanted to drop your pay, but by law, I can't do it.
Why is that, sir?
Because, like I said, you're never considered my foreman. I think a foreman ought to get the pay.
Don't you think that would be a question for Eddie?
If Eddie would use foreman, why did he vote on it in public meeting? Why didn't he tell me and David? Why didn't he tell the people out there in the district that you was our foreman? What was that ever discussed? If you want to be discussed about stuff, why wasn't that ever discussed?
I mean, I can't answer for Eddie.
You never told us you was our foreman.
I never felt like that.
You never said, hey, I'm your foreman.
I never felt like that. I had to.
How do we know that you were our, we didn't even know that you was getting extra pay, that David heard about it a couple of years into it, that Eddie was paying him more money. We didn't even know it. We had no idea.
I mean, I think that's a question for Eddie and not for me, sir.
Well, I mean, you bringing this up to me like I should know, when we did not know that you was our foreman.
But I would like to say, I mean, if you would let me...
But either way, I mean, I can change you being foreman.
Yes, sir, I understand that.
I don't want you as my foreman. Is that clear enough?
Yes, sir.
I think David's my foreman. For a year, I have tried to make my mind up on who I'm going to be foreman. So that's where right I'm going to go, and I'm not hiding it right here.
I understand that, sir. I, I understand you are the commissioner, and what you say goes. But I was just asking if you understood the way things were set up when you took over.
I told you, we did not know that you were our foreman. Eddie never told us, never told anybody. It never was brung put in the paper. Your pay raise was never in the paper. It was a hidden secret that nobody knew about.
But you do acknowledge.
After I got elected.
Yes.
I seen your pay papers. I always want to know why you were making more money.
Yes, sir, that's all I'm asking.
What's that got to do with anything? I never said you was my foreman. I never recognized you as my foreman. I never recognized it. Pretty much the same thing, Kenneth. Eddie done the same thing, pretty much, as what you've done with David. No, he wasn't my foreman. I just raised the same pay he's making.
When did you raise the pay?
You raised David's pay to foreman's pay. But it was in the paper. I put it in the paper. I didn't hide it. Yep, but you hadn't named nobody as a foreman. That's what I'm saying. I didn't think I needed no foreman. I'm making all the decisions in District Two.
And so did Eddie, sir.
No.
Eddie, Eddie, Eddie worked just same as you. He'd come in every morning, he'd give us what job duty he wanted us to do.
No, there's a big difference between me and him. I work.
Okay. He'd give us what he wanted us to do, and then I made sure that it got done.
It got done. That's really, so you're taking credit for all this mess, all this grown-up trees, and all these roads washed away, and all these covers.
I'll take absolute credit, because that's what, that's what Mr. Eddie Berg wanted done, and that's what we done.
What he's saying, Kenneth, is he done what his commissioner at the time told him to do. How things got is, was out of his control if Eddie wasn't telling him to do it. We're going to, I mean, we're working on the same man, and this commissioner never told us that he was our foreman. What we supposed to do? Well, I mean, in the same sense, you can have to take as much credit for it being grown up and all as he does. No. He was our foreman. He was supposed to be our foreman, and Eddie was our commissioner. If nobody is your foreman, it's what you just say it. I did not know he was my foreman. Well...
As I stated, I knew that this would be this way when Kenneth got elected. I mean, I understood that we'd have this to go through at some point.
You made it.
Just simply because you was my employee, and now you're my boss. So here we are. I knew this was coming.
I'll, I'll try to say this briefly. I see what Tim's trying to say, but legally, I think what Kenneth said, they never knew it, they never knew the pay raise and whatever. And then he says he raised him to the foreman pay. He did, and we voted on it and let him. And, and he did raise him, but he, then Kenneth said, if you listen, when he first started, he was on track for a year and then appoint him a foreman. So I, I think what it boils down to is who Kenneth wants to be his foreman, and let him pick his foreman, if that's legally, if you can do that. And I don't see why you can't. We all have a foreman.
I know, but that's, that's every commissioner's opinion.
Right.
I think you'll be putting me in a compromised position, taking both of my employees and putting them over me. There's only been a matter of time before I'll be rode up and out. I mean, it's simple.
No, you're going to do it to yourself. I mean, you do it to yourself. When your work performance don't do the job that you're supposed to do, you do it to yourself.
Sir, there's no...
I don't treat any of y'all no different.
Sir, there's no way to judge how you grade my work performance. Your judgment would be totally different from Tim's, or Dale's, or Keith's. I mean, that's just...
I done told you, I've been working longer than you have in the county. I know what it takes to get a job done. If you're not doing the job satisfactorily, if you're not doing the job, is it not my responsibility to call you out on it?
Sir, I've been there eighteen years. I've never had a write-up or complaint from any other boss.
Because all you done is ride around and pick up.
I had two commissioners before you, and now that we're here and you're my boss, all of a sudden, I'm a bad hand.
No, you're just not the foreman. You might as well get that title out of your head, because you are not my foreman.
I understand.
I don't know how clear I can make it. I had no foreman for the last year. I don't hide it. I'm wearing it in public meeting. I'm talking about it. Your last boss you had didn't do this. There wouldn't be this problem right now.
You may ought to check the paperwork, sir.
She did check the paperwork.
Maybe she's not found it.
She's not found it, just like the write-up that I had you wrote up a year ago? And you said F-U?
So I'm responsible for it coming up, Mr. Luke, sir?
No, but our former administrator did not file it, put it in your files. But Scott Hunn, I told him to get it back and put it in your files. That's where it needs to be. I told him to put it there. I mean, it was supposed to have been there. And you told Caitlin last Friday that I changed my mind, I guess, that I did not want it in the files. I did not change my mind.
Sir, I don't know what you've done.
Well, the problem is, you've got to work now. You didn't have to work before. That's the problem. I mean, we're going to work. That's as simple. I don't know how clear, I don't know how else to make it. We're going to work in District Two. If nobody wants to work there, they can go leave. I don't care. At this point in the meeting in time, Kenneth, at some point, you've got to appoint you a foreman if you're going out of one. David's bottom. The biggest thing that's got to be done, just like with me, my employees, the sheriff and his deputies, everybody's got to get along and work together. I agree, but you're going to have an employee that won't work. He just goes home, does what he wants to, and not say anything about it? I wouldn't do that. I never will do that.
As far as what you want to accomplish today, you want to just go ahead and appoint a foreman today? Then you can make that motion, and y'all can vote, and we can go on unless there's more that you want to...
He can't do that today. It's not on the agenda.
Okay.
Put it on the next agenda.
Okay.
All right. We're going to be moving on. Thank you, gentlemen, for your time. Well, Bobby. Next thing on the agenda for today is to move next week's meeting to the Tuesday, because next Monday's a holiday. Hello, Mr. Bob. Do we have a motion to move February seventeenth holiday to Tuesday, February eighteenth, which will be next Tuesday? Y'all make a motion. Second. All in favor? Next thing is to pay for the industrial parks oil test out, out at the jail fund, which is nine hundred dollars. We had a soil test done out on the site. Before hopefully one day we'll get to build this new jail now. As far as I know, everything, I hadn't talked to them, but everything come back good then. Keith, that's my understanding from what Mike Shaw told me.
Yes, sir. I've got the papers on it. It all, it all done to it. There's two lots there. We tested both of them, dug on both of them. I think six or eight holes. They came, Terron, I think Terron's the name of it. And they done it, and said both lots was good. I think there were seven point three and five point something acres. And they said that it did test good. And I think they, they gave us a pretty good deal on it, because they quoted us fifteen hundred dollars. And the guy, Mike, Mr. Mike, knew him, and he gave us some pointers over there. And he got out of there and took it with him, and he cut us nearly in half of what he originally said it would be. So I think we got a good deal on that. We've got the paperwork on it. It's, it's ready to go.
Do we have a motion to pay this bill?
I'll make that motion.
One second. All in favor? Is there three part-time employees? Dale?
I got two part-time that I've been using, and they're not going to be able to work part-time for me this time. And I need to replace those two people.
I think it's my understanding, since we're going with this temp service, that we just take out. I don't think we have to vote.
He is wanting to run it through the county and keep them at under twenty hours a week.
Oh, okay, okay. My bad, didn't understand. But as far as running through the temp service, we just take applications and...
That's right.
Each, each department head can hire who they want that way, the council or the commission.
He wants to keep them unless ours.
Yeah.
Yeah. They won't be working over twenty hours a week.
Which means that we don't have obligation to pay for their health insurance and retirement match and things like that.
So we don't really need to vote on this until he finds him some...
I think we're voting to allow him to accept applications.
Okay, all right. We have a motion by Dale to accept applications for part-time employees for his district, under twenty hours, be through the county.
I'll make that motion.
Second. Second. All in favor? Next. Be for you, Mr. Sheriff.
Now, the sheriff has lost one of his deputies. He's been gone for, how long has he been gone, Chris?
Five months.
About five months. He has not replaced him until he, until he's just found someone A-Post certified, ready to take the position. So we're hiring, we're voting to hire him. Tyler Norton.
Got one or two hurt, too, out.
I've got two out that's injured.
Kind of like I've got... I've got one having surgery tomorrow, so he's going to be out for about six weeks, so it's just going to be me and one more. All right, so what we have is Tyler Norton, Norton?
Norton.
As a deputy with a base pay rate of sixteen twenty-three per hour and a uniform rate of a dollar forty-four per hour.
Correct.
Do we have him?
I'll make that motion. One second.
All in favor? Kevin, I'm safe.
Well, I appreciate it. I mean, Tyler is a well-experienced officer now. He's twenty-five years old, young man. He's originally from Hackburg, and I hired him away from Muscels PD. He won't go back home. So I'm glad to have him aboard the Sheriff's Department.
This day and time, it's hard to find somebody that's uncertified.
Very hard. That's why it took him about five months to kick the rat away.
All right, next, we have to adopt a resolution to participate in the statewide county liability insurance fund. This is something we're already in through ACCA. It's just, I think it's every three years we have to opt to stay in. It's just an upgrade, or update on the paperwork actually is what it is. So do we have a motion? To continue with the...
I'll make a motion, continue.
Second.
One second.
All in favor? Next, I guess you're Trisha Bopum? You're the only one here I didn't know.
I'm here with the Liberty Learning Foundation. We are a nonprofit, 501(c)(3) out of Huntsville. And what we're doing is providing a civics-based education program for elementary students. We are now serving forty-six counties, about fifty thousand students throughout the state. And we are excited that Marion County is one of our last counties to come on board with us. The kids are involved in a second grade program here, so that's about three hundred and twenty-five approximately students out of representing all of the county schools. And it has a lot of moving parts. It's really, it's a fun, engaging program. They're learning a lot of lessons on civics, character building. We do a financial literacy component. We're teaching them about careers at a very young age. We feel like we need to start them young. But we want them to understand and have a knowledge of importance of their title as a citizen. We feel like civics is something that is not taught like it was when we went to school. It's not necessarily in the curriculum, but yet they have to pass it in the graduation exam upon graduating as a senior. So we're bringing it to them in a fun way. We've already had our kickoff here. That was last Tuesday. They came together at the Hamilton Elementary Gym. We bus all the kids in, so they'll be at one place. And as you can see in the brochure, the first thing we do is a kickoff, and that's where we bring in our first person onstage, Libby. She is dressed in green as Statue of Liberty, and she tells them fun facts about herself, where she came from, how she was created, the gift from France, all the things that we feel is important that they may not hear if we don't teach them in some fun way that they can remember. So this is their kickoff. They go back into their classrooms, and we have provided all the materials and resources that their teachers teach them with. So I am out in the community, and of course, we have other regional and state sponsors that provide this program. So without that, we would not have the materials and resources. But we are actually giving those teachers all the things that they need for a ten to twelve weeks of lessons. It'll be voting, it'll be immigration, it'll be the military and veterans, all of these things about our American history, what we're about, and we're teaching that with a lot of character. We want them to be not only a good student, but a good person, so therefore, ultimately, when they're in the workforce, they'll be a good employee. We will culminate this program here, after the twelve weeks of lessons, on May the first. It'll be nine o'clock at the same gym. I would love for any of you to come and participate. They will not only graduate and take an oath as a super citizen, but they will actually have teamed up with their classmates, and they have honored somebody as a local hero. They picked somebody within the community that they feel has given back in a positive way. And they bring that person up on stage, talk about them with a little biograph, and then give them a little nail pen that's in the shape of the Statue of Liberty. So the entire thing is themed around the Statue of Liberty. We feel that it's very crucial lessons at this time. And we hope that you guys will support us. Not only do we need financial support, but we also just need networking. I need to be in the community, finding others that can join in our ranks as sponsors to keep the program going. And as you see in the brochure, this is a second grade program, a fifth grade program, and this year, we are launching the junior high program. So when funding is available in each county and each area, we will be expanding into all the levels. But as of now, we're in the second grade. So I just want to make you aware of that, and if you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer it. If you know any teachers in the second grade in any of the schools, please, you know, go for it, ask them about it.
The Board of Education, or Board of Littles, they endorse that?
Yes, we always have to start with the superintendent and then work our way down. Of course, the principals have to be behind it, and then we for sure want the teachers to be involved with it, because they do have to do the teaching. We have made it very easy for them. It's all in notebooks. They have Scholastic America books that follow along with the lessons. And we can even coordinate volunteers. We can have somebody come in from the community and do the lesson in a week. So they can do the lessons at their discretion, when they feel that it's time to interject the civics. And it does go along with the Alabama Forces Study. So yes, we are definitely in with it. The state legislators, they're behind this. The governor's working on the workforce development in all the communities, so this is something that they're behind. So we really believe that what we're doing is going to serve a purpose.
Is Winfield City Schools involved in it too?
Winfield City is not in it, not yet, no. We, we'd like to get both systems if we can, but we really just start with where we're asked to be first. And I have been working with Northwest RCND Council, and Mr. Barnwell had actually even said to me that he thought the county would like this. So we approached them, and they were ready for it to come, and here we are.
Okay.
And we've been around since 2009, so this has been developed and put across the state since the school year of twelve thirteen, so we've been around for a while. And we're strategically placed with two advanced team. We actually have two Libbies. We have educators that are former principals and teachers that's putting together, you know, the programs that they go teach the teachers. And then, of course, there's fund development in strategic areas of where we live. Within two hours, it was two-hour drive for me. So that's how we go about getting our funding for the program. And it's thirty-six dollars a student, so with three hundred and twenty-five tickets every year, that's roughly almost twelve thousand dollars. And again, I'm, I'm working with others, you know, the local banks, the pharmacy, the Walmart, any kind of community sponsor that we can find. I think that's good for the kids to see up on our screens that we've had some community sponsorship to keep the program going. So, thank you.
So do we call it the twelve thousand?
Roughly.
Well, how much is, how much you, how much more of education than your people is behind? -get the Board of Education and your people that's behind this to provide?
The Board of Education? Well, we don't ask for anything from the school system, because we feel like their time is what they're giving. Um, a hundred percent of the funds that I find go strictly to the materials and resources. We actually have a seat donor that takes care of all of our overhead. So the school does not have to put in any money. It's free to the schools. And if you know your state legislator, um, they, they know about us, and if you wanna ask questions through them, they like to support us as well.
All right.
Anything else?
You say we're the last. I mean, sixty-six counties has got this in-
We're in forty-six right now. Um, we started with just a few, and then we had a big seat donor from Alabama Power come in and want us to cross the state. So we did that in school year thirteen, twelve thirteen, and we went from thirteen thousand students to forty-two thousand quickly. Their, every school system was asking for us, and then we just realized we had to figure out how to get the funding. So now we, we make a point to get into the community first, and find some funding, and then, um, we just expand as we can. We've just grown and grown until we're up to forty-six counties and, and growing. We would love to be in all the counties, but until we can find funding there, we can't, you know, get to-
So if it starts today, when would it next school semester?
It's already here.
It's already started, yeah. We kicked off last Tuesday, and then they'll go for their lessons. It's, it's a ten to twelve week program. We let them kinda pick, you know, what's good for them. So if they have to dodge spring break, or if they start in the first semester, you know, Thanksgiving, those kinda things, then we let them pick what week is good for us to come back. So we're gonna finish the program here May first.
Well, as much as I think this sounds good to be a former educator and not having civics anymore, like I did when we were in school, more like this, how much are you expecting from, or, you know, but, just in the year without budgeting this, uh, we need to have a figure and know if we could look at our budget, see if we possibly have any-
Right. Well, a classroom roughly is nine hundred dollars to a thousand, and, um, if there's twenty-five kids in there, it's roughly thirty-six dollars per student. So of course, you know, typically a school would be five thousand dollars, and all the schools in the county participating. Y'all have to tell me what the names of those, Brilliant and Sullivan and Dewan and-
Nelson.
There's what, law schools. But there's roughly three hundred and twenty-five students, so, um, that many of them are participating. And we actually allow them to take field trip. They bus in to, to the gym. We pick a common venue. So Hamilton was evidently centrally located, and that's how we picked here. And, um, but they learn their lessons back in the classrooms. And we, you know, we, we feel that the support that we get is an investment into the community, because this is for all of the second graders. Uh, we're not selecting any particular group. Um, and if we can be back in a couple of years, and if the fifth grade program started, of course, with funding, then we'll have a second and a fifth grade program going. So then you're basically doubling the cost that it's gonna take to get it, uh, in both grades.
Tricia, you have already secured some community funding in this area.
Yes, yes.
So she's not asking for us to fund this program?
Uh, no, no.
She's already secured some funding.
We have regional and state sponsors. Boy Cross Blue Shield helps us throughout the state. Alpha helps us throughout the state. Um, we have a small portion of the Education Trust Fund. Um, we are heavily working with Northwest RCND Council. They've helped us. Um, I have actually been to the community college and left information there. I've not actually spoken to someone, but that's my job, to be in the community. And that's why sometimes I like to start at the commission, because you guys know people that might lead me to others here.
Well, you're lucky you're acting for county funds from up-
Oh, yes. But not, but not in entirety. That's what she's trying to say. I do have other sponsors.
She's not asking us for twelve thousand dollars.
No, but if you want to give me twelve thousand dollars, I'll be first.
I thought I heard that a long ago.
I just want you to understand that not only do we love your support financially, but it's just the ability to bring this to you, and say, "We are in your community. We want you to be aware of what we're doing, in case you were to be asked about it, or run into a teacher, or principal, or superintendent, and, and kinda get, you know, their feel from it, what kinda vibe, and then, uh, if you can send me out into the community to find others." That's what I'm looking for.
Well, it's gonna happen without our-
Oh, it's happening. Oh, yes, sir. It is happening. All right, that's right. And once we take schools in and systems in, I mean, we don't not come back. I mean, we're gonna be here for the long haul, cause like I said, we, we have, um, state sponsorship that can take care of areas, that we can't find any local sponsorships, but we usually have pretty good, uh, reception. So, but I'll be glad to speak with anyone, or, or I have my card in there with my email. If you know someone that you think I might go reach out to, I'd be glad to.
Good.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mike, you got?
No, I haven't taken. Wish y'all got something.
I got something that you looked at after the meeting, but that's not- Well, that's everything on the agenda for today. Do we have a motion to adjourn? All in favor?
Don't forget to like and subscribe to our YouTube channel at www.youtube.com/49CountyNewsTV.